Mr. Board meeting to order. Sheriff, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, first order of business this evening is area plan.
Our first item is a dedication of right-of-way for Essex subdivision. Thank Jeremy with Morley's. Is he here? No. There is an exhibit. This is where the Essex at Berkshire PUD, major subdivision, is going to go. It's already been approved with the zoning. It's where the sewer lines are going to go into place. They had to get that right-of-way dedicated prior to the sewer company coming through, something with Newburgh Sewer and their consents for crossing their easements. So they wanted the road there first before the sewer came in, before they plat this. They did the same thing across the street, just north of Oak Grove Road in Berkshire. They did the exact same thing. The deeds have been prepared and they're in here to sign. And I'm sorry, I thought Morley's was going to be here to discuss it tonight.
Do you have any comment on that?
I don't because I'm not knowledgeable enough. Oh, that's a good question.
So this is not something-
There he is, Jeremy. Yes.
Jim would have been on time.
Hey, in fairness, y'all aren't on Monday and I just came from Vanderbilt County. I raced here, so sorry for being a few minutes late.
We're just going over the dedication of right-of-way. Could you explain that a little better than I could, please?
Yeah, I've got just a couple of them. So the exhibit you see, so Essex is a sub that's got full primary approval. I don't know if Grove Road we're familiar with. We have filed the Phase 1 plat. However, the sanitary sewers, which are in red, were installed by Macon Corp. They're seeking acceptance on those. But you'll see to the west, so the dash lines are future streets for the next phases. They will fall under future platted right-of-ways. And so we are here to get that right-of-way dedicated now so that we don't have to give Newburgh Sewer an easement. Because in the past, Molly, they've required a subordination agreement, which is not something the county's been in favor of. I think Bobby's familiar with the last one we did. And so that's what we're seeking, just to get the right-of-way. We did it on East Wick, which was the sub you see north in the picture. We also did it for Phase 1 of Berkshire, which is the entrance to Friedman Park. So we've done it a few times. It's not something we're a fan of either, but it's also, it's just kind of our county workaround so we can avoid Newburgh Sewer and their restricted easements. And so does that kind of make sense?
Jeremy, why do we need a warranty deed?
So the developer has to deed the ground to the county so that the county can dedicate this right-of-way. And so the slivers, the three areas in blue, if we were doing that phase of the road, we would just grant the entire road via the plat. But since we're not doing it via the plat, we have to deed the ground so that you guys can then formally dedicate it to the public as a street right-of-way.
Interesting.
Steve, do you have any comment on this?
No, as Jeremy has said, it's... They need to dedicate the right-of-way before the plat so that Newburgh Sewer, the easements can be acquired. We don't want to get the cart before the horse. The county needs to have the right-of-way in place first, which guarantees its rights as right-of-way.
Right, yeah. Conversely, to get the sewers accepted for the subdivision, we could grant them a restricted public utility easement. But then that would have senior rights over any future platted right-of-way, which is what we're trying to avoid.
And would Morley and developers telling you that their footprint for these right-of-ways, when they plat them, will follow these dimensions exactly?
Right.
Counsel legally, we're good here?
Yeah.
Very good. I entertain your motion.
Make a motion to approve the dedication of right-of-way for Essex subdivision.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries 3-0.
We have a few extension requests. The first one is Lexington State Subdivision, First Federal Savings Bank by Michael Carter, SVP. We're holding two letters of credit, one for drainage at $4,025 and one for streets at $6,603.99. They're requesting a one-year extension on both letters. They've had four years and they expire November 17th of 2021. The site has been visited by the county engineer. He has signed off on this request that the dollar amount is sufficient.
These are the same dollar amounts being rolled over as previously approved.
Anyone?
I make a motion to extend the letters of credit.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to do number three or do you have to go exactly down that order?
We are following the agenda.
Okay. Come back up and note.
Okay, sorry. The next one is Lexington State Subdivision. This one's by Niem Homes LLC by Krish Patel, the owner. We're holding a letter of credit for the sidewalk construction and $10,845. They're requesting a one-year extension at the same dollar amount. They've had four years and this expires November 17th of 2021. This has also been signed off by the county engineer as being sufficient.
Okay.
Yes, as reported.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries 3-0.
Okay, then we have Village of Lexington 2, PUD. First Federal Savings Bank by Michael Carter, SVP. We're holding a letter of credit for street signage at $690. They're asking for one year at the same amount. They've had four years. This expires November 17th of 2021. And the county engineer signed off on this one as well.
Just for one-year extension of the same amount.
Okay.
How come we're holding for street signage? How come that's not already up if there's a street built?
I mean, I know we had the signs put up. I'm not sure during the storm if one came off or just one was missed. That is a private drive there. I know that doesn't matter, but I think there's just one specific sign that was missing.
Yeah, the PUDs are private streets. They're not maintained by the county.
I just wonder why the street sign hadn't been put up already?
I mean, we put in for them all to be put in. I guess just one sign was missed. I know at that time there was other signs that had to be put up.
I make a motion to extend.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries 3-0.
Next would be Woodfield Section 4, Woodfield Development LLC by Steve Blankenberger, member. We're holding a letter of credit for sidewalk construction for $16,021.50. They're requesting a one-year extension at an increased dollar amount, $17,341.50. They have had six years. This expires November 4th of 2021. The county engineer has visited the site and not signed off on the request.
I signed that one in your office this morning after I adjusted the dollar amount. Do you have that one in front of you?
Yes, for adjusted amount of $18,991.50.
Lot number 72 was not accounted for. So that and with the dollar amount changing from $12 millennial foot to $15 millennial foot gives us a net increase in the letter of credit to guarantee the surety for the remaining sidewalks to be built. I believe Knightkirk did your last one, but they missed lot 72, which I found this morning.
Okay.
So Molly has the new letter of credit amounts that I've authorized on behalf of Bobby Howard.
Can you restate that amount, please?
The new amount is $18,991.50.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve Woodfield 4, the letter of credit for $18,991.50.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
I got a question on the letter of credits. As of right now, all the lots are sold in Woodfield. But what has happened, some of the lots have gotten sold from one person to another, to a builder. And restrictions and covenants require that sidewalks must be in place at the time of completion of the house or within a maximum timeframe of two years if no house is to be built. Some of those have been carried on for some years. So now, really sidewalks should be in so the homeowners can use the sidewalks. And I know I can try to force them to put them in or put them in and file a lien. So now some of these lots that's in this Phase 4 might still fall in that two-year. So I guess I'm just asking for some guidance on, do we force them to put the sidewalks in? Obviously, I got to pay for the letter of credit every year, but I'm not sure how long this will drag on.
But some of those lots are undeveloped or are they all developed?
Undeveloped.
These are all vacant.
Lots. I wouldn't want to put sidewalks in necessarily before you build, would you?
Yeah, but to his point, here he's-
He's carrying a letter of credit.
I mean, so you don't have... If they've resold, you don't have an agreement with the new owner whatsoever unless they have to honor the original agreement.
Well, I would think they'd have to honor the original agreement because we have a purchase agreement that they sign and that needs to go, I would assume, go handed to the new owners. That goes into the erosion control and the whole bit, so.
I know. I've had discussion with another developer too about it. And Steve, I don't know if we might even talked about this too, but to me, you know, here you got to... I mean, what if they decide not to build for eight years or, you know, and so you've got sidewalks in there that can't be used? To me, I think they should be forced to put them in. And if they build, there's going to be a place where the driveway goes in. You saw cut that. If you break that up, then you got to replace a four-foot by 20-foot, 18-foot, whatever piece of, you know...
That's assuming, once you build a house and all the landscape works out to the street that way. So you'd be off maybe a little. From my standpoint, I mean, the letter of credits aren't mounting to that much. But at some point, we got to... The homeowners don't have the sidewalk and it should be completed. So I'm just kind of saying, where do we want to go with this? And not force them into it, but yet on the other hand, we got to have... They need to complete it too at some point in time.
That's always been part of the problem and the board's been a little lenient on carrying the sidewalk letter of credit because of that issue. We've never been able to come up with a good scenario other than just build them and then they're going to have to tear out 20 to 30 feet and maybe more, as Mr. Blankenberger alluded to, if they don't have an idea how they want their lot finished.
So, and maybe this is a question for legal counsel. So what's the fix to this? Do we have to redo our subdivision ordinance? Or do we just instruct developers, hey, you know, you got to have an agreement?
Yeah, I think that falls more in the private side of developer and homeowner and have that worked out between those private contracts as opposed to the county setting a legal precedent or stamping its legal authority in what you shouldn't and shouldn't do in those situations.
But I think the county's got to have something to work-
Protect him.
He can draft his agreements and say, hey, the county says all sidewalks have to be in, put in a subdivision within four years-
Absolutely.
-of a subdivision, or whatever that number is, I don't know.
And that would be something to build into the subdivision control ordinance, which would be beneficial.
When a primary plat is approved, that's part of their approval. They are to put those sidewalks in, the developer at that point in time.
Before the houses are built?
Yes. The streets are to be put in, utilities are to be put in. That's why we give them five years for the letter of credit on sidewalks to give them some time to get some of those homes put in. But that's a condition of their approval from the Area Plan Commission.
So these should be already in?
Ideally, yes.
That just doesn't make sense to me. You're putting in sidewalks and you're going to bust them all up?
I know.
Then now you got mismatched sidewalks? I mean-
That's why we drag our feet, why make them tear them back out again?
Guys, I'm a common sense guy, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Terry.
I don't have an answer. Fifty-fifty.
I know other towns have their building inspector inspect them before they'll sign off on the certificate of occupancy. We've looked at that, but nothing's happened there.
So you're saying have the developer put the sidewalks in. If they're not protected, if they're broke up, then they got to redo them? Is that what you just said?
However, I don't know if it's the developer or the private landowner. But before that home, the new home will get a certificate of occupancy, the sidewalk has to be in and it has to pass inspection.
Right, but if he's a developer, he puts in all sidewalks, then he sells a lot. Somebody builds a lot, breaks up the sidewalks, he shouldn't be liable for them. He's already done what he said he was going to do. It should be the homeowner who has to-
I can put them in. But on the purchase agreement says, if you don't put the sidewalk in within two years, then I can put it in and if they don't pay, I file a lien.
Right.
And to Molly's point, if they broke up part of the building, compliance issue before a certificate of occupancy is issued, that damaged portion or cut-out portion of sidewalk would have to be replaced.
Right.
As a developer, Steve, what makes sense here?
It's an issue, I'm not sure. You don't want to have to make them paid. But on the other hand, the requirement is within, at the end of two years, the sidewalk needs to be in, whether the house is complete or not. And that's in the purchase agreement. And so if that gets passed on, that's what I'm referring to. Well, I don't know what the requirement is, but when you've purchased a lot, then you think everything, you have to go by the restrictions and covenants. So why wouldn't that go with it and they be liable?
And to his point, the reality is, two years come and go because the person who bought the lot isn't even thinking about putting in a sidewalk unless the house is going to be-
Right.
But what I can do is go back and see of these lots that do not have the sidewalk running on them yet, look at what's the timeframe been between first purchaser, second, third, or builder? And maybe we can look at a later date and say, okay, well, we need to address this and maybe address the owners and say, we need to get this completed based on the purchase agreement.
This issue here is a little bit harder to fix because it's after the fact. What I'm, I guess what I'm getting at, and maybe this is not the time nor the place, and Molly, I thought we discussed some of this in, maybe it was before you, when Sherry was here. But I thought we discussed some of that and changing some of our subdivision ordinance. Was this is one where we had trouble with, where we just couldn't figure out a good solution?
Yes, we went back and forth on this and we never came up with one.
And I think we even had Morley, we even had Morley in there. You know, we had a pretty good-
Couple developers.
Couple developers and stuff. Because, you know, we don't want to make a rule that's a hardship on the developer that, however, you know, if I'm a taxpayer here, I build a house and then I don't have a sign that I can't use for five or six years all because somebody didn't want to build or-
I could buy a house and buy the lot next door to me just because I want the lot and never plan on developing on it.
Yeah. And so then there's no sidewalk. So there's something, we got to fix something here because this is...
But the two-year, in the purchase agreement, the two-year deadline, whether the house is there or not, the sidewalk needs to go in.
Right.
I would agree with that, yeah.
But you did that on your own as a developer.
That's a self-imposed restriction, right, on your end?
I'm not sure. I thought that followed back into, like you said, approved, the plans were approved and that would all fall into place. Because the sidewalk falls into the easement, doesn't it? So that'd be county or not.
They're in the right-of-way.
Or not easement, yeah, right-of-way.
But the plat, whenever the plat is said, there's something along five-year requirement to have-
On the letter of credit, on sidewalks, you initially get five years.
Okay.
So we've got a rule, you've made a rule as a developer. Everybody's being lenient. We just hope somebody didn't wake up on the wrong side of it.
So anyway, I don't take up any more time, I just thought I'd bring it up.
Something to think about, thank you.
Well, like I said, we've talked about this, but I don't think we got it fixed. I agree, I think there needs to be a timeline, whether the developer owns it or an individual. And, you know, I can see me as a commissioner being a little bit more lenient with a developer, you know, because if things aren't finished. However, a homeowner just sitting on a lot forever, I don't think I could be that lenient with. You know, if you're going to build, build, if you're not, then you got the sidewalk.
Maybe something like two years after title transfer.
Transfer or something.
We'll think about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's your guy, Molly?
Okay, we have some requests for releases of surety. The first one's a commercial entrance, C-19-099. Entrance construction for 5111 Red Brush Road by David Pike, attorney for AT&amp;T Mobility. We're holding surety totaling $11,400, guaranteeing the entrance construction. They've had one year. Letter of credit expires November 2nd of 2021. And this request has been signed off on by the county engineer.
The entrance has been constructed. The county engineer recommends release of the surety.
I make a motion to release.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries 3-0.
Next would be commercial entrance, C-20-043. Entrance construction for Digestive Care Center at 3788 Venetian Way. Summit Land Development LLC by Hugh Moore's agent. We're holding surety totaling $8,569, guaranteeing the entrance construction. They've had one year and this letter of credit expires July 10th of 2022. And this has been signed off by the county engineer.
Again, the entrances have been built according to approved plans and the engineer recommends release of the surety.
I can attest to that, drove on it today. I make a motion to release.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My motion carries 3-0.
We have some requests to rezone. The first one is PCR-21-08. Petitioner owner, Amago LLC, an Indiana limited liability company by Thomas Hartman, the owner. It's to rezone 4.201 acres located on the north side of Oak Grove Road, approximately 200 feet east of the intersection formed by Oak Grove Road and Liver Road from M2 General Industrial Zoning District to R1A One Family Dwelling Zoning District. Ohio Township, 1569 at 8866 Oak Grove Road. This was advertised in the standard on August 30th of 2021. And the APC gave a unanimous positive recommendation for PCR-2103 at the meeting held on September 13th, 2021.
Sheriff?
Yes?
You have something to speak to on the matter?
I'm just hoping that you guys will rezone that.
Okay.
So we're going from industrial to residential, right?
That's correct.
I make a motion to-
The ordinance number would be 2021-36.
I make a motion to the rezone request of ordinance 2021-36.
No, second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
My motion carries 3-0. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Next is PCR-2109. Petitioner and owner is Jay Rose Properties LLC by Joe Beard, the owner. It's to rezone 4.37 acres located on the west side of Prospect Drive, approximately 868.2 feet north of the intersection formed by Prospect Drive and Van Road from M2 General Industrial Zoning District to M3 Solid Waste Disposal Facility Zoning District, being lots 6, 7, and 8 in Work Research and Industrial Center Number 3 as recorded in document 1996-003758 in the WART County Recorder's Office. Ohio Township, 1968. This is as advertised in the standard on August 30th of 2021. The APC gave a unanimous positive recommendation to the commissioners to approve PCR-2109 at their meeting on September 13th, 2021, as amended with lot 6, with, excuse me, lot 7 and 8 being rezoned to M3 and lot 6 remaining as the M2 zoning.
I'm going to make a recommendation on PCR-21-09 to table this for 30 days. We've got a request by our health department with IDEM to go and do some soil sampling to make sure of hazardous waste disposal. So until I see some type of report back from IDEM, I don't think that we should approve this. Do you understand?
I make a motion to table.
How long would you like to table it, to the November 8th meeting?
No, 22nd.
November 22nd?
Yep.
That gives us time, we've got, it gives IDEM time to get out there and do their inspection.
Gentlemen, IDEM's already been there, that's why we filed.
We've requested another.
You have-
So do you have a copy of that inspection report?
I do, not with them, but IDEM is the one that requested this be transferred from M2 to M3. That's the whole point of the process.
Understood, but we will need to do some soil sampling.
Okay.
There's some concerns from residents there that they have brought to the board of commissioners and so we can't answer their questions, we're not chemists and that kind of thing. So we've sent them to our health department and our health department is inquired with IDEM to do the inspection.
And just for the record, there's no change here in what's going on. This is what's been going on here for 20 years.
That's fine.
I understand your concerns. We've had this discussion with the committee of commissioners.
We've got concerned citizens. I was at your APC, at the APC meeting last two weeks ago when this came, or a month ago when this came in front of it. And I was part of the group that approved it. But since then, some residents have raised many concerns and I can't approve this knowing that I might be hurting some of our residents.
Well, there's just unknown there. So as soon as we know something, then we'll go from there.
So 11:22 at 4:00 p.m.?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I make a motion to table to November 22nd, 2021.
Second.
First and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries 3-0.
Okay, we have some street construction plans. The first one's PP 1804, the enclave at Oak Grove PUD by Ken Favor. They have amended their street plans. It's 1.78 acres located on the east side of Coal Mine Road, 264 feet north of the intersection formed by Coal Mine Road and Oak Grove Road. Ohio Township completely goes on file. Private streets asking for no improvements to Coal Mine Road. And they are requesting to amend the street plans for this development. Original street plans were approved on 7/23 of 2018. Um, and this, they have been signed off as amended by the county engineers.
Yes, these are the continuation of the same plans you had before drainage court for drainage board approval. Um, the location of the streets is the same. Relatively minor changes, if any, within the confines of the P U D development. Uh, no improvements were asked for at Coal Mine Road in twenty eighteen and no improvements are being asked for currently with the amended plans.
Have anything additional to add?
No, that pretty well covers it.
All right.
Scott, I have one question. Where's the retention basin? Firstly, you want to identify yourself, so.
Scott Fiedel with Cash Wagner and Associates.
Where's, is that retention basin there on the?
Southwest corner.
Southwest corner, okay.
Still the same location. It's been expanded a little bit to accommodate the new engineer's drainage calculations. And it will be a dry basin as we.
Dry basin? Yeah, a dry basin, but along with a reduced number of units too on the overall development from sixteen to ten.
And is that gonna be owned and maintained by the association?
Yes. Yeah, it won't be the county. For sure.
It'll be what?
It won't be the county.
Oh, I thought you said it will be.
Oh, no.
Time out.
I don't think they are wrong.
Yeah. I think we got one more we're doing. Okay, so I make a motion to approve the street construction plans as presented.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Our last one, PP dash two one dash one five. Caleb and Erica's and Clay and Ellie's subdivision. Petitioner owners Caleb Schmidt, Erica Schmidt, and Clay Happ and Ellie Schmidt. Seventy-one point zero seven acres located on the east side of E B Road, approximately half mile north of the intersection formed by E B Road and Shelton Road. Being lot two in Allen Dell subdivision as recorded document two thousand nine R dash zero one two zero four five in the Wart County Recorder's Office. Boone Township twelve, five, and eight. They are requesting no improvements to E B Road. And this has been signed off by the county engineer's assistant.
Everything's good, Steve.
Again, he's asking for no road improvements to E B Road. These are basically two thirty-five acre parcels. County engineer warrants no upgrade for E B Road based upon the development of two thirty-five acre lots.
Anything else to add?
Nothing to add.
All right.
I make a motion to approve PP twenty-one dash fifteen.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Mr. President. Can I say something about the enclave at Oak Grove? You know, this is, this is something that, that the commissioners were not happy with in the beginning. There was, I can't remember. Steve, do you remember how many homes were shoved into this site?
Eighteen.
Many, it was up to eighteen.
Eighteen or nineteen homes. And we were, we were not real happy about that plan. And I think we voiced our concern and here with the developer came back and they redesigned. And so now they got ten home sites. They're gonna be a little larger homes, little farther apart. And so, you know, while it, it just, it just didn't seem the original plan to fit that neighborhood and that area. And so anyway, I'm just, I, I, I think that's a positive.
I do too. I think they went back and did a good job of relooking at their land and how they could break it out and make it more pleasant for that area.
And they are privately maintained streets. The county will not maintain the streets as P U D.
Very good. Thank you, Molly.
That's all for us. Thank you.
Next item of business on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
All right.
My motion carries three zero. Next item on the agenda is our county administrator.
Um, first thing down here, Roger has the consent agenda. So he doesn't have it. He doesn't have a list, but I do have two other items. So do you want me to list those items on the consent agenda or do we want to just approve?
Let's approve the consent agenda first. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
My motion carries three zero.
Roger also left a fixed asset notification form for the X-ray, the new X-ray machine in the J C. So that would need approval and signature.
I'm sorry. I was thinking, um, what was the?
Fixed asset notification form for the X-ray inspection machine inside the J C for.
Just that one piece of equipment.
Sorry, I thought there was a second.
I make a motion to approve the fixed asset notification form.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay. He also left, um, the beam renewal. This is our server and file share backup system with Keller Schrader. It's in the amount of one thousand ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. For your approval.
Do you want me to restate that?
Beam renewal for the fire, our file share and server backups in the amount of one thousand ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
That's something we pretty much have to have. It's not part of anything else. That's just an independent agreement.
Do we need it?
We need it.
Then make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business is our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is approval of or establishing precincts. I'd like to call Mr. Andrew Skinner with our firm. He's been doing a lot of work for this.
You got a map big enough for me to read?
Thank you.
Stop designing, bro.
Get a, get a plotter for your office.
Is that all the minutes? Why you have glasses?
Okey dokey.
Uh, I've given you a, a handout that just goes, uh, just so we can go through some of the changes that we had discussed at our last special meeting that we had a week ago, introducing and exploring some of the different precincts that could potentially uh, change based on population changes from the last ten years in the census. The first item on, uh, that I've given you is actually something we did not have last week, but we have since acquired, and those are the final, uh, signed and approved by the governor lines for the House and Senate districts for Indiana. Uh, the congressional line, District Nine, is the entire county. We don't have to worry about, uh, any precinct changes there. Same thing with the Senate District Fifty, that's the entire county. So we don't have to worry about any split districts. But the House line, if you look at your map, uh, it's got a little number one in the corner. The green area is seventy-eight, the blue area is seventy-five. And those are the prior, the previous lines, splitting those two House districts. That red line is the new line. So as you can see, uh, seventy-eight has lost a couple of precincts and which have moved to seventy-five, Ohio Three, Ohio Eight, and part of Ohio Thirty-One. Uh, Ohio Thirty-One extends all the way from Oak Grove down past Lincoln and down into the boundaries of town of Newburgh there. Uh, but the House has drawn their lines, cutting off the northern part of Thirty-One at Lincoln and the southern, uh, which would go to House District Seventy-Five. And the southern portion of that Ohio Thirty-One would stay with House Seventy-Eight. So by law, we are required then to adjust that precinct line in order to match the new House District line. That is actually one of the precincts you were already looking at potentially adjusting anyway last week. So this actually fits in just fine with what you had talked about. Uh, we, we would just want to take that northern part of Ohio Thirty-One, that could remain Thirty-One. And then the southern part of Ohio Thirty-One, which, uh, we have a, a map further down in, in our packet here that will explore that when we get to it. Um, the, the, the next i- uh, item to talk about is the Town of Chandler. We had discussed this at the last meeting. I don't have a map for you, but if you recall, there were two annexed areas of Town of Chandler that our precincts had not, precinct lines had not been adjusted to include as part of the Town of Chandler now. And I think, uh, we, we, uh, I think everyone was on board with making that change, but just wanted to verify that with commissioners today, that that is something that we should put in our draft of the forms for, uh, precinct changes to the state. And this, that is going to be Ohio Fourteen, which is the east, uh, western part of Chandler. There's a neighborhood that was included and annexed into the Town of Chandler that we would extend Ohio Fourteen out and pick up. And then on the east, northeast side of Chandler, uh, Boone Fourteen would be extended to, uh, incorporate the little extra triangle piece that the Town of Chandler annexed. Those would be just two small precinct changes to Ohio Fourteen and Boone Fourteen, just, just to match up with the new boundaries of the Town of Chandler. We'll just need a confirmation from the three of you if that's what you want to do. Not a motion or anything, just a yes, we think that's a good idea or, or.
What if we were to just sit here and stare blankly at you? I, I think I'm fine with that suggestion.
I am too.
I'm good.
Uh, the, the next item we had talked about was, uh, in the Town of Newburgh. And we had talked about whether or not you wanted to readjust the precinct lines to match up with the Town of Newburgh District lines. And it was brought up that the Town of Newburgh districts are at large votes only. Uh, so the precincts don't really, uh, matter as far as who's on the ballot for, for the Town of Newburgh. Um, each precinct votes for all of them. So it's not, it will not affect. If we leave them as is, it's not gonna change anything. It's not gonna make it easier to draw the ballots or make a difference in the ballots. Everybody who lives within the Town of Newburgh is gonna have every district race on, on their, on the ballot. And, and we talked about also that the Town of Newburgh has got a proposed annexation, which is potentially going to require redrawing all of their boundaries anyway. And the council for Town of Newburgh was here last meeting and so they're looking, they're going to need to be redrawing their districts even prior to that for adjustment of population based on the census. So, um, the question is just, do you want to wait to redraw those until Town of Newburgh gets done doing their boundaries and their drawings? Or, uh, or do you want to change it now? Completely up to you. There's no benefit to doing it now.
I don't think it makes sense to do it now.
I was gonna say wait.
Wait.
Yeah, okay. Uh, okay, so then the next, uh, number two, a little map, it has a little number two at the bottom corner. So this is the Ohio Thirty-One that I was referring to earlier. And I've outlined in the black Sharpie there, the portion of Ohio Thirty-One that is south of Lincoln. Given that the House District line is to the right of that area, we can't include that section with Ohio Eight, so it's gotta be moved left to be included with Ohio Nine. It's really the only option we have there. I just need, see if you agree with that or you want to explore another option such as making it its own precinct. You can make a new precinct. However you want to do it.
How many's in there? Eight active voters, eight thirty-six? Total population is, no women, no one, I'm sorry.
It's around five, six hundred people in that lower third there.
Okay.
And wouldn't put it over the two thousand, Andrew?
No, it would not. Ohio Nine currently only has nine hundred forty-nine active voters. So if you add another five, six hundred, we're still well under.
Makes sense to me. I don't want to make another precinct.
Yeah, I don't think we make another precinct. I think we just combine it.
Agree.
Okay. Next one that you guys had discussed, turn to, uh, the next map. Page three. We, uh, there was discussion of Ohio Nine, uh, and there's down in the lower portion of the map, there is a section of Ohio Nine that extends out into Ohio Thirty-Two for some reason. I'm get, I'm, you know, my suspicion was back when they drew Ohio Nine, there weren't enough voters there. And so they just had to pull some additional voters in. But there's certainly now that you're combining part of that Ohio Thirty-One into Nine, there is no need to have this extra piece down here taken out of Thirty-Two. And you could, uh, remove the three hundred fifty people that live in that section and put them down there in Thirty-Two where they probably worked to begin with. You'd still leave Ohio Nine with enough voters once you add in that lower half of Ohio Thirty-One that you just approved.
How many, how many again are in that little section there?
About three hundred fifty.
I'm fine with that.
Good with that.
Just makes that line, it, it makes it look more set, more cohesive than instead of having.
Reasonably compact.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Good terminology there. Okay, uh, the next map that you have in front of you, uh, page four deals with Ohio Twenty-Nine and Thirty. There was discussion last time of whether or not you wanted to combine Ohio Twenty-Nine and Ohio Thirty, which was, uh, Lake Ridge, right? Uh, is that what that is? And, and right there off Two Sixty-One?
Yes.
And then the other subdivision is something different as you go towards Bell. I forget what that one was called. But I've taken that and I've put here in a map for you, uh, that tan section is what Ohio Thirty or Twenty-Nine or whatever number you chose to make it would look like if you combined them. That black line going down is that, is what that old line, old split between the two precincts was. So that if you combine them, it, it just looked like that tan area.
We said Lake Ridge. That's Old Hickory.
Old Hickory?
Yes.
Oh, that's right. Lake Ridge is down.
It's farther north. Yeah, yeah. This is Old Hickory.
Old Hickory.
Yes. Sorry, my fault.
Yeah, thank you. But I thought I had the wrong map.
It's not what I say, it's what I mean.
So whatever you guys.
By the way, he said it.
I, I said, I suggested.
I agree with you.
Uh, uh, the other, the other change here that you had discussed and, and, uh, explored last time, you can see, uh, Ohio Thirty just down and follows Van Road, kind of makes a L shape down there and see versus following, uh, Hillsborough Drive. And so the question that you were, discussion you had last time was, do you take Ohio Thirty straight out Hillsborough? Or do you follow Van? And I, I, you know, that's completely preference of what line you think looks better. Um, also, you know, where, if, if that section of people is that, is part of subdivision, that maybe you wouldn't want to separate them from the rest, but those were all comments you made. And it's just needing you guys to decide what you want to do with, with Twenty-Nine and Thirty.
But Andrew, the, the people, to me, the people on the south of Hillsborough, they're on Ohio Thirteen. So, but so.
Currently they're in Thirty. And I redrew that.
Wait a minute. So you're, you're saying everybody on Hillsborough is on Thirty, even if they're on the south side?
Correct. Yeah. And I, I redrew that so you'd see what it looked like. But currently, you know, this is the map of what it, what, as I, I redrew it, W T H actually redrew it for us, but like I asked them to. Uh, but this is what it would look like if you made both those changes. You don't have to make the changes. I just wanted you to see what it looked like.
I think it makes more sense to follow Hillsborough, but.
That, that four oh four, of course, is not correct. You'd add up Twenty-Nine and Thirty. It's about thirteen hundred voters if you were to combine them.
If, if you combine Twenty-Nine and Thirty.
Correct. Yeah. Correct, yeah.
And eliminating with the precinct with 600 or less voters is something that we are at least recommended, if not required to do, right?
If you make a change to a precinct line, then that precinct then is no longer grandfathered, and you've got to make sure it's, has between 600 and 2,000 active voters. Currently, 29, Ohio 29 has 908, and Ohio 30 has 407. So it's a couple hundred shy of the 600 mark. Of course, like I mentioned, it's grandfathered, if you don't make any changes, it can stay that way. But if you were to combine them, certainly, you'd certainly eliminate one of the precincts that has less than 600.
Not sure I see any downside, do you?
Of combining or leaving it the way it is?
Combining.
Combining, you, you lose, you know, a couple PC, or PC in a vice. So, and I don't think we've had problems getting PCs in vices, there's probably a, probably a waiting list of people that would want to get on that list, so. It is, there's, there's no, I mean, are there any other advantages of combining? I mean, you're not, you're not saving money, you're not, you're... I mean, our goal here is not to reduce precincts, is it?
It, it would eliminate a ballot style that we don't have to create anymore. That's, that'd be another change, I suppose, if you eliminate a precinct, it's one less ballot has to be created on Election Day, one less line to select who they're, which precinct they live in to vote in, when the voter walks up to the machine, which precinct to say they live in. That, I, I mean, those are maybe minor benefits, but those are some of the changes that it, that it makes, practical changes.
I'd combine them.
That's, that's my inclination.
And follow Hillsborough, right?
Good.
Combine them, and then, what did you say about the Hillsborough? Do you want to keep that south of Hillsborough as part of 30, or, or make it part of 13?
Make it part of 13.
So just follow Hillsborough?
Follow Hillsborough.
Just follow Hillsborough, straighten that line out?
Which is the red line, right?
The red line, yes.
But this is your district, and I don't, don't, I mean, I mean, I'm just...
I mean, I always thought that, that, you know, when you look at this, reasonable, compact, symmetrical, you know, just, that didn't make sense, that kind of stuck out. So I'd say follow Hillsborough. There's really no more growth, that's, that's, I think it's a retention basin in here, and that's a vector in there, so I don't think you can build any more in there, so not going to be adding any more people to it.
I think if you had went back and reviewed your notes, I think this is what we talked about.
Combine them.
Now, the other question is, if you're combining them, one has to be eliminated. When WTH redrew it, they took out 29 and left 30, you could do it either way. They remove 30 and call it 29, take out 29 and call it 30.
Does that decision have to be made now?
No, no, we'll just need to know, we got to put something down for Friday, though. It can be changed, too, I suppose. The state will just want to know what to call it.
Yeah, no, this is one that we talked about at the one-on-one meeting.
Yeah, we had...
It seemed like I had a thought there, but, yeah, to your point, I don't have my notes in front of mine, in front of me.
This may, I, I think, if I remember correctly, we were wanting, we were, we talked about combining, and as far as which one to keep, 29 or 30, that's something that you're probably going to have to look at your notes and see what we've discussed and how, which direction you want to go. And get back to Andrew on it, Dan.
Yeah, I can do that.
There's not a, not a right or wrong, we just need to know a number.
Mine, so we, we need to keep one of the numbers?
Yeah, I, I, yes, yeah. You could go through and renumber every precinct in the county if you want to. Sure would be easier to just pick one of the...
That wouldn't be confusing.
No, I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay, well, you let me know on that which number you want to use, and, and we'll go, you know, we'll call it whatever, whatever you want as far as the form submitted to the state.
Okay.
Okay, the next map item you had discussed at the last meeting was Ohio 33 and 18. And you can see on the, or, page five there, that yellow triangle is if you combine all of Ohio 33 and the part of Ohio 18 that is north of Oak Grove, makes that triangle shape. And that black squidly line is where that split between 33 and 18 used to be. And if you go down past Oak Grove to the south, that rectangular area was part of 18, and you had discussed making that part of 26. So that's what that would look like, and 33 ends up, that number is correct, a good estimate, about 1,860 active voters. And Ohio 26, if, when you add that little section in, it ends up being around 1,300 Those numbers are just estimates, the only real way to do it is to get out walking lists of every street by street and start counting.
You didn't do that?
I didn't do that, no, no.
Not enough time?
No, no.
That was your job.
No, that was my job.
All I, all I was looking for is to make sure we were going to not get too close to the 2,000 mark, which we're probably a couple hundred shy of that, so.
So we need to approve this on page five, Dan, or item number seven?
Yeah, if that's what you want to do, yes, or some variation of that.
No, I think that, I think that was good. If my memory serves me right, that was cleaning all that up, so I'm good with that.
Me too.
Okay. The next page, page six, is a map of Ohio 10. Ohio 10 is on the far south, far east west side of Warwick County, and one of the discussion, or some, one of you mentioned last meeting, the northern, again, here it crosses over Lincoln, and so part of Ohio 10 is to the north of Lincoln, part of to the south of Lincoln. We've, there's a nice long line along Lincoln of precincts that are to the north and precincts to the south, we just did that with 31. So the question is, do you want to do that with 10? The portion that's to the north of Lincoln, of Ohio 10, is Deaconess Hospital, there's...
Hospital, church, and there's what, one house, you said?
There's one voter that lives there, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Same.
Same, okay. We make that square part of Ohio 21. The next maps are, you had discussed the last meeting, Greer, Hart, and Skelton both have two townships, and in each one of those townships, one of those two precincts has less than 600 people, active voters in them. Hart, well, start with Greer. Greer has 760 in Greer 1, 538 in Greer 2. Hart has 965 in Hart 1, only 86 active voters in Hart 2. And then Skelton 1 has 383 active voters, and Skelton 2 has 682 active voters. So you were discussing whether or not to combine those two precincts in each of those townships, and so I did draw, or had WTH draw that for you, so you could see what that would look like, if that's what you wanted to do.
Can we talk about Hart first?
What?
And, and Andrew, we can, we can do this at any given time, redraw PC lines, correct?
Precinct lines can be drawn anytime, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, precincts.
Yeah, they're not based on the census, they can be redrawn anytime.
About, we'll first...
I mean, talking about Greer, I've heard from, you know, a resident up there who is a PC, that really wasn't in favor in, in combining.
I also talked to a few people up there, and got some various kickback on just the fact that they didn't like that idea.
Of, of combining?
Combined.
Yeah, I, and so, I say we leave it the way it is on Greer, and then if something comes up where there's some kind of advantage to, you know, streamline or ballot or something, then we can take a look at it.
Sure, yeah. The only downside to the drawing the way it is, is that Elverfield is split between the two precincts. And it has to be that way in order to balance out the numbers and keep one above 600, but, you know, it, it just means when we create ballots, there's a Greer 1A ballot, and there's a Greer 1B ballot for the people who live within the municipal district and those who do not live within, you know, who live in the county, so that we can identify which people get to vote for the town council and who don't. So that, that's the only, that would be the benefit to combining them. Certainly, it's not a requirement to do it, we've, you know, it's managed to be that way for years and years, it can, it can be done.
So you couldn't make, you couldn't make the town limits one...
It was drawn that way because you needed to draw some people in to get that over 600. Well, it probably wasn't drawn that way originally, but right now it would have to be drawn that way. You've got to split up the town in order to make sure that both of them have at least 600 voters. If you're going to make a change, that's, that's the requirement. So if you redraw the line at all, you've got to make sure that both of them have 600. And there's just not enough people who live within the county portion of Greer Township to get it to be 600 people. You've got to split up the town somewhat. I, I, you know, I, I did try, Terry and I talked, and we, we did look at, is there a way to do that? And you also got to keep in mind the census blocks. We can't split census blocks up in this part of the county, these census blocks are pretty large and spread out, so we can't just go splitting, splitting those up. I think really, the best option is to either leave it as is, or, you know, don't, or combine it into one. But I, I don't think it's feasible to try and redraw it.
You know, I, I think right now, with the comments that I heard, my, my vote would be leave it as is.
I agree.
Okay. And you've got Hart and Skelton.
Pardon?
You've got Hart and Skelton as well.
To me, Hart makes sense to combine, one and two.
I agree.
But then again, I thought combining Greer would make sense.
I didn't disagree there.
Dan, Hart?
Yeah.
Agrees off.
Yeah, combine.
And...
And Skelton...
Well, Baba, I mean, Hart, Hart, too, is that one word, it's just basically all fields and coal mine?
Pretty much.
Combine.
Nobody called me from the fields or coal mine.
I haven't talked to anybody about, nobody has talked to me or approached me on any of these, none. Skelton, I think that ought to be combined as well. I mean, you're talking about 1,000 people in each, each precinct, right?
The whole township, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Ditto.
Okay. The only other item is just a reminder of council districts, commissioner districts, be looking at those maps. Now that you have an idea of what the precinct layouts are, we need to get those council districts redrawn for sure, and try and balance out those populations. So just be looking at those maps, sketch out some ideas and thoughts, and if you want to send them to me, I will have WTH draw what it would look like, we can recalculate the populations, see, and see what it looks like. But that's no rush, it's not need to be done by Friday, we have till the end, end of the year to do that, so.
Thank you.
Just try and put that onto your November radar.
In my opinion, I thought your first rendition of the council districts in number one that you did on the maps was the next one, I mean, where you balanced it out to 15,000 or, but that was a pretty good plan, that was, continue to look at it.
Yeah, keep, keep looking, and any, any more ideas you have, I'll have WTH draw it up, so you can see what it looks like. Again, you guys, just, eventually, when you think you're satisfied and ready to discuss it, between all three of you, we'll put it on the agenda.
Good.
There you go.
Okay.
Mr. President, we just need a motion and order, a motion and a vote on the order establishing precincts of what was just discussed to be set up to the state for them to review as part of the reprecincting process. So it doesn't have to be signed, and it's subject to change based on how the state comes back to us and what decisions we make between now and December, but we do need on the record a motion to approve order establishing precincts, so we can submit those precinct changes that we talked about just now to the state.
Yeah, I'll entertain said motion.
I will make that motion in order to establish precincts.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries 3-0.
We need to sign this, John.
You don't have to, actually.
Andrew, thanks for all your hard work, I'm sure that was mind-numbing.
You know John did it all.
Yeah. And that's, that's on the record. I do have one thing under my items that's not on the agenda, but needs to be addressed today, and that's a proposed electric distribution easement proposed by CenterPoint for the solid waste management district property on Pilsner Road. We've gone back and forth a little bit on the language of that easement, and I think in email, just around four o'clock, CenterPoint came back and with their final proposed revisions that I think we'll be fine with. So what would just be appropriate now is a motion to approve that easement, subject to final council approval.
Very good. Anyone like to make that motion?
I make that motion, that's stated by legal counsel.
I'll second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next order of business is our county highway superintendent, engineer, Phil and Steve Sherwood.
Yes, thank you. On behalf of Bobby Howard, I want to present the items he had for this evening. Item number one was the purchase of a fuel and lube truck, and to quantify that, he proposes we use our existing used distributor truck chassis that has 27,000 miles. The new bed installed is 102,205, that includes all the lube and new lube and fuel equipment. And then to remove the existing tank and equipment efficiently from the existing distributor truck is about $1,300, so total... So total price for a truck ready to go is one-oh-three, comma, five-oh-five, one-hundred-and-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-five dollars. Here's a copy of the Napa Hyde quote he's got for the equipment, and he said he got two other quotes for a fuel truck, and he says this option saves the county money, and gets us the new fuel, lube, and truck equipment on our existing chassis.
Makes sense.
I have that for your approval this evening.
So a comparable truck right here, looks like on this quote, is a hundred-and-eighty, a hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand dollars.
That's correct.
So just, you know, note-
Was that a new one or a used one?
I, I think that is a, it looks to be a new one, twenty-twelve, I don't know, I take that back. Uh, no, it didn't say how many miles, no, that's a twenty-twenty.
I was going to say, I thought that was a low mileage used truck, and it was still seventy-thousand.
By far saves the county the most money with this option.
I just want to know Bobby's, you know, he continues to, you know, work and do things that's in the best interest of the county taxpayers' dollars.
Make a motion to allow highway department to purchase and repurpose our truck for the price of a hundred-and-three-thousand, a hundred-and-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-five dollars.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
The other item he has for me to propose tonight is the Bell Road change order number thirteen. Just briefly, this, these changes were already approved in previous change orders, ten and twelve, the dates just needed to be updated, and change order thirteen, per end dot standards. And again, the contractor has every intention of completing the project, yet this fiscal year, not going into twenty-twenty-two, he still thinks he can be done by Thanksgiving next month.
Right.
On the Bell Road and the Trail project, was what I got from the consultant this morning. And for your, if you're willing to approve, I've got some documents requiring your signature at the end of the meeting.
I make a motion to approve the Bell Road change order number thirteen.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
This project for a county that doesn't accept change orders, this project has been a joy.
Hey Steve, I've got a question for you.
We share your pain.
On the truck, the equipment that's being removed from the chassis, was there an interest in putting that on the upcoming surplus auction?
He didn't say how it was to be disposed of, I know we've had trouble with it, to keep it in working condition.
Okay.
It is a used bituminous tank-
I think that gentleman's going to be here on the-
Application spray process, it probably could be put on-
Okay.
Some type of salvage or auction item.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all the items I have that he wanted covered this evening.
Okay. Next order of business is our county sheriff.
Aye, ma'am.
Commissioners, anything?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Sure.
Oh.
Oh.
Sorry, I have something.
I just took your word for it, I didn't even look at the agenda.
All right, but I do have something. Sheriff Mike Wilder, Deputy Jack Donahue, I forgot, he had retired, unfortunately for Jack, he had had some little bit of, some medical issues that, with his foot, that is well-known, I mean, he's not hiding that, so, he was forced into a little bit of early retirement, not too early, but a little early than he probably wished, but as we do, he had twenty-two years on. With the sheriff's office, anyone that serves eight, it's accustomed to give them their duty weapon and surplus, so that's what's on the agenda. Jack did, like I said, twenty-two years protecting our citizens, and service for the sheriff's office.
I appreciate Jack's service to the county, I thought Jack was an excellent deputy, good person, and just, just an honor to work with him in my years as a reserve deputy, so. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Okay, anything?
I have nothing.
Mr. Malley?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Did, did you have something?
Just wondering if you kind of have the [inaudible].
I don't know.